Have to go through the legal process, the public hearing process. We will have to have that to close the alleyway, right?
Um, yeah.
For the alley components?
Yeah, the alleyway, you can, I mean, that parking lot, no. The parking lot is, the city parking lot, you can do whatever you want to with it. Yeah, it's closing the alleyway, you would have to advertise for the public hearing, et cetera.
And the alleyway's being closed in conjunction with what? The redesign of the parking lot?
Yeah, well, no, you're basically extending the park into the alleyway, so the alleyway actually now becomes an entrance into the parking lot that's at the front of the bank. It doesn't go all the way through anymore because there's nothing to go through to. If that makes sense.
It becomes obsolete.
Yep, it does.
But we could call for that public hearing anytime and just turn it.
Right, basically, you're going on record to say that is that, A, the Friends of Hickory can move forward with their fundraising, we're going to put together a... No, I'm not saying that. And that we'll enter into a memorandum of understanding with Friends of Hickory and just directing staff to do that and basically saying, you're going on the record as saying is appropriate, you're going to consider changing the parking lot and closing, but of course you'll have to go through the public hearing process to close the alleyway as the mayor wanted out.
Well, this is exactly what we, the kind of thing we envisioned when we started down the road on our bond referendum, that we would have partners join us and do things that weren't even anticipated. So I'll recall for all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's you now. Thank you.
Second item under department reports is consideration of facility naming rights and opportunities by the Greater Hickory Tennis Association for tennis complex improvements at Hickory City Park and the city's financial commitment and I'll ask Mr. Mac McLeod, the Parks and Rec Director, to come to the podium and discuss the topic with city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Gronk, good evening. Before you tonight is your consideration of facility naming rights opportunities for tennis complex improvements at Hickory City Park. With me tonight assisting in the presentation are really the two persons who are most responsible for where we are, where we are tonight, and I commend them both for their efforts and that being Chair of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Tony Wood, and the President of the Greater Hickory Tennis Association, Lenny Teague, and I'll be calling them up in a few minutes. What I want to do is just talk to you a little bit about, you know, what's going on at the park up until this, up until this point. Back in fiscal year 2011, 2012, the upper five tennis courts at the park went through a total, went through a total reconstruction. We totally rebuilt the upper, the upper five tennis courts. And the following fiscal year, in 2012, 2013, we totally reconstructed the lower, the lower three tennis courts. Around that same time, in January 2013, Kathy Kim relocated her tennis program to Hickory City Park, and I think I called in my peripheral vision, I think Kathy, see, I think I saw Kathy come in. I think the one word I wrote down when I was, I think, the one word I want to use when Kathy began her program at Hickory City Park, the one word I can use to describe what happened there was an explosion of tennis, an absolute explosion of tennis. We've got the youth and adult, I'm just reading, oh, we got youth and adult tennis lessons Kathy's had there. We've run youth tennis tournaments. We're in an organization called the Western Youth Athletic Association, which is a group of Parks and Recreation departments in the 16th most western counties. We had not participated in that tennis program for many years. Kathy got our, got that program started. We were able to enter a, enter team in that, in that league this year. We've run parent-child tournaments, we've run spring break camps, summer programs. I mean, we were looking at running some numbers today. We're pushing close to 1,000 participants since we moved it over there, so the park is, the park is, we have tennis going on at Hickory City Park and it's, right, this is Kathy running them through the grill. She runs them, she runs them hard with these couple of slides. So with all that, after we did, after we did the reconstruction of all eight tennis courts, Kathy brought her program over there and became part of, part of the city's Parks and Recreation Program. Representatives of the Greater Hickory Tennis Association approached staff with an interest in development of partnership to make further significant improvements to the tennis complex at Hickory City Park and will, you know, Lenny and Tony will go into more detail, I'll hit the surface on that. What I want, what we wanted to do, just give you an idea of the current, current site conditions. What you're looking here, this is the combination picnic shelter restroom facilities currently at the park. It was built back in the early, early 1970s, '73, '74 timeframe. Most of the park was developed using federal dollars, land and water conservation funds. So a restroom facility in some form or fashion due to federal guidelines has to remain for perpetuity based on, based on the federal guideline. This is just another, another picture, this is the restrooms and then beyond it is the picnic shelter itself. This is the entrance road coming in, coming into Hickory City Park off of, off of 12th Street Drive Northwest and then back in the back, that I'll show you, here's a closer picture. This is the, this is actually the existing parking lot as it is today. Currently, we only have 20 parking spaces there, so if you can imagine with the tennis pro, the youth tennis program going on in the summer, we have people park here to use the bike way that goes down to Guyton Rotary Park on some days, and I'm sure Kathy can, can attest to it because my phone's wrong or with, or I get a note from Kathy about that, but the parking lot does, does give, and that's, it's a problem, but, you know, it's a good problem because we know, we know the park's getting, getting used. This is the, this is the walkway that leads down, down to the upper, upper tennis courts. Prior to Greater Hickory Tennis Association's interest in partnering with the city, staff's plan was really just to add an additional restroom facility down closer to the, closer to the, to the tennis courts, basically where you see the picnic shelter. There used to be a building, a building there, used to be restrooms actually years ago, years ago there, so up until we started having discussions with the Greater Hickory Tennis Association, plans were just to, just to put a restroom facility there. Based on, based on the preliminary discussions that the staff had with both the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Greater Hickory Tennis Association, we, we developed a preliminary master site plan for the proposed, proposed improvements for, for the park. And what we got highlighted in yellow are the, are the improvements we'll be discussing with you tonight and the area, you can see the top yellow areas, the park coming in, existing, the existing parking lot, which is 20, 20 spaces, carrying it on down, we would expand that parking, create an additional 75 spaces, 75 spaces, and then bring the, demolish the existing restroom facility and bring it down closer to the, closer to the, to the existing tennis courts, and we'll show you that in just a few minutes. The existing, the facility we're proposing, what you're seeing here, this is the picnic shelter and restroom facility we recently completed at Quanis Park. Plans are basically to duplicate somewhat what you see there at Hickory City Park. You just, I want to show you just a couple of pictures of that. This is the walkway leading up to the, to the restroom, just another shot. This is an interior view where the changes would be made to this design, this design versus what we would propose for out of Hickory City Park. If you see that back, that back wall there, we would add a, a meeting room onto that back wall, about probably, it's about approximately 500 square feet of a meeting, meeting space there and then, and then extend, put another bay onto the, onto the picnic shelter, so the picnic shelter will be the same size as you see there. We have, we do have project cost estimates, new picnic shelter restroom meeting room facility, $275,000. We would, as I mentioned, we would expand the parking from its current 20 spaces to 75 spaces. We were curb and gutter currently, the current, the existing parking lot does not have curb and gutter. We would improve the lighting there, but also involve removal of existing picnic shelter restroom structure. You can see that cost estimate, there'd be about approximately 250 meter feet of a paved access service road. We'd have approximately 1,440 meter feet of eight-foot wide paved walkway, one of the things we will be doing, taking back inside. Currently, right now, it's very difficult to access those lower, those lower three tennis courts. So we would, we would, our plan is to take the paved walkway leading from the parking lot down to the upper courts and then down, down to, we'd go down to the lower courts. Seating, grassing, contingency allowance, so that total estimated project cost are $574,200, based on Greater Hickory Tennis Association minimum funding commitment with Lenny, when he comes up, he'll go into more detail on the commitment that Greater Hickory Tennis Association is prepared to make, but based on that minimum commitment of 125,000, the City of Hickory's maximum financial commitment to the project would be approximately $449,200. As I said, when I started, a lot of discussions that got us to this point went, went between Chair of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Tony Wood, and Lenny Teague, as I said, who's President of the GHTA. So this time, I'd like to ask them to come up and, and just talk with you about through the process that both groups went through.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everybody. This has been an exciting project for us for a couple of reasons. As Mac mentioned, the usage at the park after Kathy Kim came on and brought her tennis program there exploded, and, you know, that type of usage puts pressure on, on the existing facilities. I don't know if anybody here has been to this facility in the, in the evening or in the later hours. You know, with more people comes safety issues, so we're addressing a safety issue by increasing lighting, parking, those types of things. So the usage dictates that this is needed. Secondly, the connectivity between Guyton and the bike riding trails and this park. This is a facility that won't just serve tennis, it's going to serve the people that are frequenting Guyton as well and the parking. I know that some of the challenge with the parking right now is that people who are using the trails, the cyclists are using the parking at the tennis, and it's a battle for the parking spaces. So it's, it's a facility that's needed. The timing was ideal, you know, they approached us and, you know, to have a public-private partnership is, is just the ideal situation for us, rather than me standing here asking you for money without that type of partnership. I mean, it becomes much more attractive and exciting for us. But what excites me about being Chair of the Commission, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Commission members, is we followed a process here. We, this is the culmination of months of working together, collaborating not only with the Greater Hickory Tennis Association, but Parks and Rec staff, the Commission members who are representing, you know, the public, the citizens of the community, and I think that's what excites me most, is it shows that, you know, when we work together and we collaborate, we're able to culminate in this type of presentation, it makes a lot of sense to me. You know, the, the Commission, this was presented to the Commission back in, in May, and, you know, some of the questions that came out were the funding percentages and the CBYSA, the, the priority use agreement we had in place with them was used as the model here. That came in at 20%. With the, with the numbers that we're talking about, even with the contingency funds, the funds that they would be sharing or committing to this is 22% of the total project cost, including the contingency money. So we're above that model that we had with CBYSA, and that is what we've used throughout this entire process as a measuring stick. The Commission unanimously recommended that we present this to you for your consideration and we're, we're hoping that you will, will approve us going forward, and the next steps in the process are raising money, and I'm going to leave that up to Lenny to explain how that will be done.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Just to give you a little background on the Greater Hickory Tennis Association, we're a nonprofit, we're under, subnonprofit under United States Tennis Association, North Carolina Tennis Association. Our main mission is to provide the opportunity to learn tennis, play tennis, and promote tennis. And then, as you see with Kathy Kim's program there, she fits right into our mold. I mean, anybody that wants to learn to play tennis, she's going to make it happen. It doesn't matter what your financial situation is, she, she's going to make it happen. So, you know, when, when she got over there and we, and of course the city committed to redo those courts, as they stated, the usage went way up. They've got over 15 teams over there in addition to the, the youth programs. So it's a very busy spot many times, and so it was brought to our attention mainly by Kathy Kim about some of the improvements that would be good to have at the park, and that's where we got involved. And as some of you know, I called a meeting and said, hey, how do we proceed with this? And what can we do to try to make this happen? Because we think it's good for the city, it's good for tennis, but it's also good for the city because, you know, we have a vision, we think that park can be something really nice. And, and, you know, it's, it's got a perfect location, landing, so, and that's where we got together. We also went over what many other cities had done in their public parks with our planning process and how their success went and what kind of designs they did of their buildings. And that's kind of where we came up with the idea for this. And then the next thing is costs, so we worked real hard with Mac and to come up with some costs. And, you know, we feel, we feel real confident with our ability to raise the funds we're committed to. There's hopefully a good opportunity that we're going to raise more money than that. We have not started soliciting funds yet without permission or the project's approval, so that's kind of what we're here for tonight. The main things that we wish to raise money on is actually selling the naming rights. And so if we were successful in selling those kind of naming rights, we'd probably be funding more like 50% of the, the project instead of 22. We don't know exactly where we're going to be. We've got some money in the bank right now that's the GHTA that we can commit to the project, and we feel confident that we can meet our obligation of at least 125,000. If we're successful in some of these other things, that, that amount would go up a great Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a thought, and it's a little bit of a drop shot to use it. I mean, so, I mean, it seems like right out of the gate after that bond vote, here's an opportunity to leverage your organization's mission with what we're trying to do with the Riverwalk. This land is contiguous to the Riverwalk.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're going to be building parking lots and bathrooms, they should be sized to maybe accommodate both uses, you know? So would the GHTA be willing to let us dig into that just a little bit? It might take just a little bit more time than shooting right out of the gate so we can do something really cool there.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're all for anything with the expansion. Right now, the 20 some spaces we have, if anything's going on at there now, there's people parking in the woods and all over everywhere. But with the addition of 75 spaces, we were taking into account, there's a good number of people that bike, they park and they bike, they walk, and obviously we want people to park and, you know, and go to the park and have a picnic or whatever, you know? So that's where I think we, when we were projecting the 75 spaces, I don't think we, we felt we needed all those all the time. We basically were hoping to allow four public access and much more than tennis. But, yeah, any, you know, we're willing to work with anybody, and that's what, you know, a lot of people ask me, says, why don't you just wait and let the bond thing go? And I said, well, you know, we're going to go ahead and proceed with this because we think this is good for Hickory, and, you know, if the bond passes, it's going to tie right into everything we're trying to accomplish for Hickory, and, you know, what's good for Hickory is good for Greater Hickory Tennis Association, so.
Yeah, I mean.
You said bond money isn't earmarked for this.
No, no, but the idea is that design, you would design it such that you could kill two birds with one stone.
Well, exactly. It's right there, it is very close to where we presently have the, I guess I'd call it a mountain bike trail through there.
It is.
It ties in with a whole lot of amenities that we have and are planning to have. So I think what you were saying is you, you might want the city to make it even grander.
Precisely, and what it, what it'll take is some, some time on the design side, I would think, but, I mean, I'm sure we can.
We're, we're for whatever, you know, what we really want to do is get started, get the money, because the need right now for the bathrooms is immediate. You know, there's certain times of the day that parents don't exactly feel great dropping their kids off up there, and, you know, we have some people that don't want to go up there and use them, and so, and then obviously the parking situation. So we just want to proceed as, as quick as we can, within your approval, obviously, and that's, that's our hope.
Is 20 years naming rights, is that typical?
It's something, you know, they asked me the question and I batted around and I've seen some that have no time limits. You know, our theory is the people that, that invest in the naming rights, we feel like they're going to have ownership in the park, and we want to give them something for a reasonable amount of time, but we also want them to continue to have ownership in the park. You know, what I've learned from Greensboro and Winston-Salem and Ashford and all these other areas is that if, if they have ownership in the park, then 20 years from now when we decide we want to do something else, they're, they're still involved in the park and they still want it to be a great park because their name's on it, so.
Well, actually, my question was if we, you know, should it be more than 20 years?
Yeah, we, we weren't sure. That's something we definitely were not sure about, and, you know, we bounced it around, but we just thought, well, what's at least a reasonable amount of time that somebody would commit to? But my theory is hopefully it'll be a continuing process, especially if we're fortunate enough to get somebody to name the park, that's something, you know, they're going to want it nice because their name's on it, so. But we're also open to, if you think it needs to be longer or if we get out and start talking to people and decide it needs to be longer than we can, but, you know, our theory is have it that because the courts are going to need to be redone every so many years, there's a lot of things that are going to have to happen, so.
But about 30 years, 30 years should we redo the court?
About 30 years? The courts.
Do they last 30 years or not?
No. Courts typically, about every five years, you end up at least having to reseal them. If you don't, then you start developing major cracks, which is what happened. The reason that project was so expensive this time was they literally had to dig out all the asphalt and completely redo them. That is more expensive than building a brand-new court. So the, the hope is, and then we're hoping to help with that maintenance cost, is to, if we can take care of them as we go along, then we'll always have small maintenance costs before those cracks develop and before they get bigger. So that's, that's the best way to do it, so, thank you.
So following up on Lenny and, and Tony discussed it, basically from this point, a priority use agreement will be developed to formalize the partnership between the Greater Hickory Tennis Association and the City of Hickory, with that agreement requiring both the approval of the Parks and Recreation Commission and city council. And as Tony, as Tony said earlier, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered these facility naming rights opportunities at their November 11 meeting and has recommended its approval to you tonight. So with that being said, the staff recommendation to you pending your consideration, the staff recommends development of a priority use agreement to be brought back to city council for consideration, formalizing partnership between the Greater Hickory Tennis Association and the City of Hickory for tennis complex improvements at Hickory City Park to include requesting facility naming rights opportunities. So that is staff's recommendation to you, and I, I'll be more than happy to answer any, any other questions any council member has.
You've got a good showing out here tonight.
Yes, sir. Kathy gives me notes all the time. She draws me notes all the time, all the time. I love her.
Every once in a while, I just see something I really want to make the motion on. So I'm going to make the motion that we proceed with the staff recommendation.
I would second that.
We've got two seconds.
Can I, just for super clarity, can I, can we have the understanding that, you know, as we were beginning design and drawing what stuff looks like, that we think five, 10 years down the road about Riverwalk?
That's a good question. Oh, absolutely. That was a, that absolutely was an important addition to this.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just, I think we're talking, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but that's something that we'll take into consideration as a commission and staff during the design process. We'll make sure that that's a priority and that we address that, and any ideas, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to make myself available for any ideas, you know, to discuss that that I can take to, to those meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
We had the motion by right, and I'm going to give Zagoroli the credit for the second because he was the loudest on that one. Do we have any further discussion?
I just quicker.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's you now. And I don't know if you arranged for the media covers that Kathy Kim got. The timing, the timing was impeccable. How can you turn down something when Kathy Kim and the program, we're going to take some credit for this Kathy, has possibly, most likely turned a young lady's life into a direction that will result in accomplishments she never dreamed before? Now, we will be watching that young lady Destiny for a long time, Kathy. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
The next item on your agenda this evening is discussion of bond commission ordinance and potential of calling for a public hearing. So this has been widely discussed since the bonds were approved, councils expressed an interest in creating an official bond commission. At your workshop a month and a half ago at Highland Recreation Center, you had discussion about that, so staff has put together kind of a straw man, a bond commission ordinance to begin that conversation to help you clarify what you would like that commission to do and how it would be made up. So what I'm going to do is, is obviously in the agenda packet was the initial draft, since that draft has gone out to you all, I've received various comments and feedback, and so I've tried to reflect some of that here in the PowerPoint, have distributed to you a hard copy of the PowerPoint so you can jot down your notes and thoughts as we go through. And what I'd like to do is, is start with, with an overview and then kind of walk through each of the sections, and in the PowerPoint, I've got highlighted some of the areas that either staff tweaked or added since the original draft, or your comments and thoughts, and even just some, generally some questioned areas for discussion. And then my last slide, I've actually tried to pull together all of those highlighted areas so that you can sit there and kind of look at, okay, here's all the different points of decision that, that we need to talk about. But obviously, as I go through, if you say, hey, well, we ought to talk about that one too, we'll, we'll stop and talk and then we can add it to kind of the list at the end, if you will. So basically, the mission of the, of the bond commission, well, let me first say that an ordinance requires a public hearing and, and basically codifies this commission. So it takes it to the highest level that you have in terms of the boards and commissions that serve, that are appointed by you all, city residents, citizens that, that serve the community, higher than a task. higher than a task force, higher than the, all the other terms, I guess, that we use, committees, et cetera. So it gives it a sense of longevity and a sense of important purpose. The mission in general terms is to serve as an advisory board to City Council for implementation of the bond projects, including but not limited to the Riverwalk, Streetscape, Gateways, Wayfinding, and the CityWalk. We propose that the composition be made of city residents, and I've got a question mark there, and we'll come back and talk about that. I know there were some comments from a couple of council members of, do we look at the ETJ? What about people who own businesses in the city but don't necessarily reside in the city? So I think that is something you all need to talk about and clarify.
As we go through, there are a number of places where there are question marks and maybe some highlighted items that'll be subject of discussion. The council's concurrence, I propose that we go through this as it is.
Okay.
In its entirety. And then we go back and pick up those individual items and see if we reach consensus or if we need to have a vote.
Yeah, that's where on page 13, or well, my 13, you're probably 26 or something. That's where I've tried to capture, Mayor, all of those questions so that at the end, after you look at it in its entirety, you can kind of say, okay, here's points of question and discussion, and let's debate them and determine, you know, if we have consensus or where we want a direct staff to go with the next revision of this. Thank you. 27 appointed by City Council, nine ex officio which are voting, and those ex officios are tied specifically to council, boards, and commissions, and the Catawba County Chamber of Commerce. Terms are proposed to be two, excuse me, two, three-year staggered terms. Officers of a chair and a vice chair appointed by the commission, a quorum of 10, and of course, minutes being taken. And because it is a commission appointed by City Council, all public records and open meetings laws apply. Absence from three consecutive meetings basically equals a retirement. So that's kind of the high-level overview. Walk through the preamble really quick, and I won't read all of this to you, but basically, you know, states the obvious, that there's a $40 million bond referendum, that you all are seeking citizen engagement and want to have this commission providing you feedback and insights on the projects. We have, I have explicitly accepted Business Park 1764 from the purview of the commission as we talked at your workshop at Highland Recreation Center. Staff's feeling is that that's a very unique, really, it's not a public asset per se, it's a property to be developed specifically for business use. My feeling was it would be difficult for a broad citizen commission to really be able to provide you the right kind of input that you would need on developing a business park that's going to be very specific in its development. I think the relationship there would be that staff or Mr. Millar from the EDC would come to those meetings and simply give them an update, here we are. But their role would not be one of reviewing design or proposals for work to be done out there.
And another factor is those sorts of things often require timeliness and confidentiality as we're going forward. So I personally agree fully that that should be considered outside the purview of this commission.
Yeah, that's great insight. I love that.
But advise them as a matter of interest as we can.
Yep. Moving on in the preamble, then, you have, one little point of clarification is making sure that because the life of this commission is going to be at least the term of the bonds, and although obviously the focus of the commission and of staff and council is to move forward with the projects that were discussed as part of the bonds, I think it's appropriate to make sure that people understand any other projects that fit within the language of the approved bonds could be considered as well. You don't have to only do the projects that are listed in terms of the Riverwalk, the CityWalk, the Gateways. And so we've added or proposed that we add, where's it going to show? I guess it's right there, a little bit hard to see, but the term "other projects" consistent with the referendum. So making sure that people understand that all aspects of the referendum. So here, as we go through section 2247, the composition and appointments, you know, one of the questions again is, must they be a member? The number 27 helps us divide out basically both by council appointment and by the terms and having staggered terms, and we'll get to that in a second. Now we look about, okay, who would, what are the, following, you know, which boards and commissions are represented? So again, this is just our straw man out there to discuss, but from staff looking at it, we felt like there were a number of existing boards and commissions that should have a seat. So you've got the Planning Commission, Historic Preservation, Community Appearance, Public Art, Community Relations, the Business Development, Parks and Rec, and the Youth Council. I think there's a lot of conversation in the community about other entities. Does the Chamber of Commerce, should they have an automatic seat there, given their support of the bond referendum? But as in conversation I had with some council members today, that, I think that does create a little bit of an issue of, well, where do you draw a line? There are probably other entities, including Lenore Rine, potentially the TDA in terms of the Convention Center, you know. I think you need to give some thought to that. Is it only the Catawba County Chamber of Commerce, or are there others? So just, you know, that's again, a point of discussion on your part. And have we missed any boards and commissions that should be included? I will stop here and say that we felt like voting was important for ex officio. I know different committees and commissions, et cetera, look at their ex officios differently. But we felt like if we're asking these folks to come and to represent their board and commission, that they ought to have a voice. You've got a big commission as it is, and we felt like they might feel a little bit disenfranchised if they're simply sitting in those meetings and maybe reporting back out to their board and commission, but not necessarily that engaged in having a vote. Again, that's something you all certainly can decide, this is simply staff's crack at it.
And drawing from these groups for ex officio, some of these would probably be considered for nomination as non-ex officio anyway.
Could be.
Yeah, I hear you.
But they would actually be appointed by their body. So the Planning Commission would say, would have their own discussion, say, we want this member to represent us and to fill that seat.
For that body that provides that person, will they, for the person that they may want or not, would it be just for a one-year term?
Yeah. We're going to come to that in a second, but I'll go ahead and address that. So it's contemplated that the board and commission members serve a one-year term and can serve two terms. So then you get opportunity for it to rotate through the board and commission members as well, and you just get more citizens involved.
And also, some of those may rotate off that board before the term would be up.
That's right. Yeah, there's going to be a whole host of reasons that people will rotate out before their term is up. Obviously, people move in and out of the community, different things like that, if they're absent and retire.
I mean, I don't want to, I know you want to get, but let me ask a question just from a practical perspective, and it's not until, you know, you really start digging, thinking it through that this kind of stuff. So these guys are on a one-year term, it's a quarterly meeting cycle, they're going to have four meetings. I mean, I guess, I'm trying to understand, would their role in furthering the bond, would it be more about bringing information back to their respective city board or commission?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it flows both ways, that their board and commission could have opinions about a certain project, and they say, we want you to bring that back to the bond commission and express our concerns or our interest or whatever. There's nothing magical about that, we just simply felt like if they each have one term, well, they have two one-year terms, so theoretically, they could sit through eight meetings at the same person, but it just keeps more people involved. That's all, but certainly, that's all completely up to you all. There's nothing magical about this, we're just throwing some things out there to start from. We did feel it was important to codify in your ordinance, you know, for all these years, I've bragged to my wife that I don't need reading glasses, and it would be a city council meeting where I'm trying to read small, fine print, but I've got to keep it away. This must be the night. So looking at your composition and appointments. Thanks, thanks, everybody's helping me out.
We've got some more coming to you than is a very.
Thank you. I got the big print.
Is everyone wearing the magnifying glass this time?
Just don't tell Beth, that's all I have.
It's on video already, so. Just tune in.
Okay, so we've covered, let's go to 2247 then. See, where you start talking about, okay, here are the, kind of the qualities that we're looking for on the commission. So you're saying, to the extent possible and practical, the following factors, that's the right term, not qualities, but the following factors shall be considered when appointing members. Residency. Obviously, you want folks that have been here a long time, you want folks who have been here a relatively short period of time, I would imagine. Their experience and interests, so, you know, economic development, recreation, real estate, fundraising, design, engineering, business ownership, community involvement. This isn't meant to be kind of an all-inclusive list, but I think it's meant to kind of be illustrative of, you know, we want people from diverse backgrounds and diverse interests. Then diversity in and of itself, and here, we're talking about gender, age, race, ethnicity, so that the commission is reflective of your community. And then kind of the catch-all of other relevant experience. So, you know, I think somebody once said, hey, if you had a planner from Seattle move here, and they just, you were like, wow, this person's going to have some great ideas. That might be another kind of person. So you're saying that you're going to use those in considering, and you're saying that you're going to do that for all appointments. And so what that means is not in just your initial appointment, but that as these vacancies come open, these criteria, again, they're codified, they're going to be used to keep your commission diverse, representative, and really broad. So then you get to, well, how are you going to come up with, if that's your criteria, how are you actually going to come up with the folks that get appointed? And I'll say here that we've had 150.
Is that right, Sarah? Is it right at 150 or a little more than that?
It was a little more.
Yeah, we've had a little more than 150 people express general interest. Then we sent out a survey to all of those that expressed interest, asking them to fill out the survey on Survey Monkey, which gives more information. After our meeting, I'll actually hand out to you, and I sure appreciate Ms. Fox, she was working until 15 minutes ago, to tabulate the 86 that we've had fill out the detailed surveys. So of 150-ish, we've had 86 already fill out the more detailed survey. We'll also give you the electronic version, so you can go in and play with the spreadsheet and sort, but I got a sense from talking to somebody all today and yesterday, you wanted to start wrapping your heads around who's here. So we'll give that to you, and you have that to start working from. But, so, just in conversation with you all over the last week or so, and this is, again, this is not comprehensive, but three kind of distinct approaches to coming up with how to make those appointments have come to the fore. One is that you ask myself and staff to basically take all this tabulated data, take the criteria that you're looking at, and provide you all the draft slate to start working from. And that's basically the model that we used with the Inspiring Spaces Committee. Another one would be that we simply provide you all of this information, you all appoint a subcommittee of this body and ask that subcommittee to review all of this information and whatever other input you want to, and then that subcommittee brings a slate to the full body of City Council. And that's how you did the University City Commission. And then lastly, is that each city council member just has a number of appointments. And then you all just simply have that number, and you appoint whomever you'd like to, you still pull from all this information, and so you know, you know, the types of backgrounds, et cetera, that you're looking for. I would say under that approach, a potential Achilles' heel is that if you just all happen to, you know, get the same people or the same types of people all from the same neighborhoods, or if it's, you know, only your ward or whatever, you don't have a safety net other than just yourselves at this body, when the time comes to make those appointments of saying, whoa, wait a second, we're missing people in this age category, or we're missing, we need a few more people in this gender or race category. So that would be, you know, something you'd have to work through if you chose to do it that way.
And all of this is public record.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to have, well, I personally would resent, if I were on the, if I had applied, I personally resent having my candidacy discussed in public any more than it has to be. Unless, of course, it's all unanimous. But you see what I'm saying? The people who applied for this do not, may not understand that this could be subject to scrutiny.
I think it was on the survey. It was on the survey. It said, it was.
It was.
Yes, it was.
But still, we need to limit that, I think, as much as we would like for it to be limited if it were us.
Yeah, we, I think that's a very good point. It's what I call self-inflicted wounds when you throw stuff out there that.
Like the rule always was for me, treat it like you would want your mother to be treated.
So then we kind of move into the terms. Members appointed by council are eligible to serve a term of three years, so that's kind of the general term. But obviously, to have staggered terms, so you don't have everybody rolling off at the end of three or six years, we've suggested that you have a third of the members are in one-year terms, a third are in two-year terms, and then a third are in three-year terms. All members eligible to serve two consecutive terms. So what that means is if you get put into a one-year term slot, you can serve that year, and then if council chooses to reappoint you, you serve a three-year term, you've served a total of four years, you rotate off. If you're in a three-year slot, you serve a total of six years potentially, and then you rotate off. So then you've got, you've got the staggered piece working, and everybody doesn't come on and off at the same time. We got some of the technical issues about how you fill unexpired terms, again, if people move away or they retire. And basically, what we're suggesting here is that serving the remainder of an unexpired term is a term. So if someone had been on a three-year term and they left after a year and a half, and you came in and filled that year and a half, you filled that term, that counts as one term, then you're eligible for another three years, and you'd be four and a half years in that case. Trying to keep your city clerk from pulling all of her hair out when she brings these things to y'all. We talked already about the ex officios. We're just tying, on F, we're just simply tying back 2248-F, we're simply tying it all back into the section of your existing ordinance, which again, talks about not serving more than consecutive terms, et cetera. Trying to stay consistent with your existing code. Filling the vacancies, we've basically already touched on that, that you'll use the same type of approach and criteria when those vacancies come available. Obviously, no compensation. Officers and duties, a chair and a vice chair. As we've already discussed, you're, I guess we were talking about ex officios, but we've contemplated that the chair and vice chair each serve a one-year period with eligibility to be reappointed by their, by the commission to serve a second year as chair or vice chair. So you have chairman, vice chairman serving a total of two years.
I put a question mark by that. I'm not so sure that they shouldn't be staggered and not both of them rotate off at the same time.
Okay.
You know, I mean, to have both of your leaders of the group to leave at the same time, I think it might be better to have them to do some kind of stagger there.
Okay, that's a good point.
Good point.
Of course, the chairman presides and can appoint subcommittees, call special meetings, et cetera. Vice chairman presides when the chair's not there. Ex officio members are able to vote, it's really kind of the only piece of that question. Meetings, quorums, attendance, minutes, 2253. Again, quarterly, but then called, special called is needed. So if you think about the type of work they're going to be doing as we get, let's say, we get design proposals back in that we want the commission get design proposals back in that we want the commission to review and discuss, and it's two months until they have another meeting, and that's not timely, obviously, staff would say to the chairman, hey, we think you need to call a meeting to go through this, so that we stay on track. I think, I think those will be the kinds of things that drive some of the called meetings that they might have throughout the year, just to keep everything moving forward.
And that, you know, and I have a note here, you might include E, because you just mentioned it, the subcommittees, that, you know, such subcommittees as may be needed, you know, I guess in between the quarterly meetings, you know. And I wanted to clarify, I think, on the appointment of subcommittees, they would, I don't know if it's work language, but they would not necessarily need to be within the, within the commission. They would, you know, if you're interested, if you're working on a particular area, and you want to appoint some, a subcommittee of some ad hoc stakeholders, that would be possible in, under the way this is written.
Well, I think that's something that y'all all should discuss somewhat. I think, I think we kind of contemplated as staff that they would be commission members, recognizing that my, my view is, is that you'll have this commission that's, that's kind of the overarching, looking at everything, but when you start looking at specific projects, so let's say that we're working on street improvement proposals on Springs Road, that we as staff would simply go out and engage the people along Springs Road, and, you know, have a charrette out there, and show them different ideas, and get their feedback and everything, and maybe a subcommittee of the commission is involved in that. But I think you could run into some problems if, if that commission is tasked with doing that. But that's just our thinking, the staff, and that's, I mean, if you think about the way planning works in cities, that's a real typical model. You know, staff will go out and will send invitations to everybody that's along that roadway, bring them in, show them all the different plans, get their feedback at different phases, et cetera. And you can have focus groups around the River Walk, around the City Walk, I mean, obviously, you're going to have bikers, runners, lots of different groups of people that are going to want to, you know, have some level of involvement. I have not seen that necessarily as being subcommittees of your commission, more town hall style, charrette style engagement with the broader community. But again, that's totally up to y'all to discuss and decide if you want to put parameters on that and change that. Yeah, Ms. Dula just made a good point, that none of your other boards or commissions have that inherent authority to say, well, we want to create a subcommittee of, outside of our membership.
Right.
So that would be a.
I think it gets very unwieldy when you, you have this committee, and then a subcommittee and what have you. Is it, do you think it's necessary that we even consider that?
I think the commission could, could want to have a subcommittee of their own body to dive in a little bit deeper and to work with staff on some, on some certain issues.
I think the key there is of their own body.
Right. I think your broader, outside of the commission, again, gets back into just the charrettes and, you know, just overall community engagement, the mind mixer tool, I mean, all those things we're going to try to use to, to keep the community engaged and get opinions.
And they're always, they can always invite anyone they want in to help them to explain or explore whatever it is that they're, they have questions about, is that not correct?
Yeah, I think it's going to be very similar to how this body interacts with staff. I mean, I frankly, I think city staff and your, your bond administration person or team, company, however that ends up shaking out, will set the agenda, will have those conversations with the commission. It's hard, it's hard to say, you know, exactly how they'll respond to certain things, and you know, I think we'll just kind of feel that out as we go through it. But I do think it's important that we stress to them, and everybody understands that it is advisory. City council cannot abdicate your responsibility to ultimately approve contracts, select vendors, I mean, all those things. You're wanting their, you're wanting their input and their wisdom and their expertise on it, but ultimately, this body's going to have to take those actions. And so in some regards, you got to make sure that your commission understands their mission and what their role is, and that they don't start thinking that that's their job.
We're not delegating our responsibilities.
Can't, yeah. Okay, so we've covered voting, attendance, oh, quorum, we just, you know, I guess maybe because of some planning commission experience, we felt like we need to have a fairly low threshold for a committee, for a quorum, I mean, I'm sorry. Because again, if you're meeting quarterly, or you have called meetings, you really are going to bog down the workflow process if, you know, you don't have a quorum, and you got to start over, and you got to schedule three weeks out another meeting, et cetera. We just came up with 10 randomly, I mean, 10 out of 38, 36, so many numbers, but, you know, is a third, less than a third of your members, and nothing magical about that, you can make it 12, 15. We just felt like if it's a lower number, you're not going to stop the process of moving forward because you can't have meetings because you don't have a quorum. I don't think it'll be an issue in the first couple of years, I think there'll be tons of excitement and enthusiasm, but you know, these are long-term projects, a lot of work involved, you know, you could see people starting to kind of willow away over time, maybe.
Are there any laws governing the quorum?
Nope, it's completely up to y'all to determine what a quorum is. Yep, it's your, your body, your, your law. Some conversation with council members about, you know, is three consecutive regular meetings missed too many? If they're only meeting four, you know, if you, if you have four in a meeting, they missed three quarters of the meetings, maybe that ought to be two, you missed two meetings.
That would actually be a year.
There's provision, there's provision for.
Unexcused needs to be in there.
There's provision for formal ways.
Yeah, it says, without formal consent of the commission, so that, you know, in effect, they're governing themselves.
That's not in every place, but it is in one book.
And of course, minutes.
And two, they can have as many meetings as they want, they got to have at least four, but if they have 40, then that's up to them.
Well, I wouldn't say it's totally up to them, I think that's going to be, you know, staff and the chair talking about what you need to do. I think you got to be real sensitive to not wearing everybody out.
Yeah, but I mean.
And not micromanaging everything that's going on.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine four as being the exception. My guess is they'll probably end up having six, eight meetings a year. Again, it's hard to know.
If you take, miss three meetings, then that would be a year between the two meetings that they would be, if they came after the fourth meeting, that would be the next year maybe.
Well, it says, yeah, that's true, it could be, although it's consecutive meetings.
Would that be three consecutive meetings, counting the called ones and the.
Yeah, all meetings.
Time certain, too.
This is missing.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to get into that.
So, so looking at the mission, purpose, objective, again, we kind of are restating here that the objective is broad citizen engagement. We included the language about the projects, including but not limited to, carrying over from the preamble there. I think I've already covered, kind of the mission of the, of your commission, we already mentioned open meetings and public records, laws apply. Okay, so, the various questions, discussion points, as we get to the last couple of slides. Is everybody okay with the language of other projects, consistent with the referendum being added? Since you don't box yourselves completely in there. The members residing within the city, I guess that's, you know, that's something you all need to discuss.
I think there were people who live in ETJ that are very pro-city, they own property here in the city limits, so they do pay taxes. My initial was, it should be city members, citizens only, but then we've had some that have worked very, very hard to pass the bond and truly see the vision of what Hickory's going to be, and I hate for us not to have the ability to include the ETJ.
How about the wording, if they pay taxes in the city of Hickory?
What's taking that?
That includes property owners and others.
What about businesses versus personal? A lot of people view, a lot of people view business taxes as being very different than personal taxes.
Well, I'm not talking about taxes at Walmart, I'm talking about taxes building on property.
Property taxes.
Property taxes.
There are people who would say, that person, I'm just throwing, devil's advocate, that person, no, their business pays taxes, but they don't. I pay my own taxes.
Yeah, I think people that, that own property in Hickory that don't necessarily live in Hickory should not be excluded.
I wouldn't want to see an excess of this.
Yeah, I would, I would be of the incline, because we're, once again, our objective's broad citizen engagement, that we not exclude it to just property owners even in ETJ. Right now, it's not excluded, I mean, and obviously, we would not restrict membership to property owners within the city, and so it doesn't make sense that we would restrict them within the ETJ, I mean, I guess, other than they've got a financial, you know, interest in it, but I, I still, I guess, slippery, real slippery.
What, not to have.
So I'd say, go ETJ and leave it at that, not, not say.
Not property owner or anything like that.
As long as you own property within the city limits.
Because that wouldn't necessarily be fair to someone that didn't own property but lives in the ETJ that is so pro-bond and see, and the positive and sees the vision of what this whole thing was.
Yeah.
I think ETJ ought to be.
Yeah.
Part of this.
I think it'll be a little easier to administrate from the, from the clerk's side, too. I mean, who's going to check property records and all that other stuff as people transact?
Any discussion on that one? Is kind of a consensus that you'd go with the ETJ?
We can include the ETJ in our scope of who we nominate.
Right.
Or who we appoint.
Are ETJs still in, I mean, from what I've read about the state, they're trying to do away with some ETJs?
They are right now.
So, maybe there will be no ETJ.
That's possible, that's possible, you'd probably, you know.
Why are they?
I don't know for the reasons.
Because it subjects, it subjects people to zoning that didn't have a chance to vote on it.
That's.
Taxiderm.
Do you want to limit it to residency, or do you want to say who resides or owns a business in?
I like savory.
I like to, I like to include those who own a business. If you own a substantial, I mean, if you've got an investment in Hickory, I think you ought to be able to be a part of this commission if you, if you're interested in it.
I would rather say resides, that you actually have an investment of living in the ETJ.
But some folks, you know, have more investment in their business than what other folks would be maybe in their residence. I mean, I don't, why would we exclude those folks?
How you going to prove that? Who wants that to be discussed out in public? Who wants me to tell the people at McDonald's, hey, this guy pays a lot of taxes?
Well, that's not the issue, not the issue about how much taxes he pays, the issue is he owns a business and he has an investment in Hickory just the same as anyone else.
I, I'm going to hear, I just want you to know, I'm going to hear, I don't think so-and-so pays any taxes, and he's on, he or she's on that commission. They're voting, although we know, we know the limitations of the commission's responsibilities. There will be people out there saying, they're voting on my taxes, and they don't pay them themselves. I just think we're getting, okay, we have one or two, I don't, I don't know that's a problem, are we, are we going to say four or five or six, is that too many? Are we just going to say anybody who has an interest and is smart?
Smart.
No, or has qualifications.
That fits the demographics.
But I think we would all keep in mind what our goal is, and that's to have this reflection of our community, and no, we're not all going to go out and appoint everybody from the ETJ and no one from the city, I think.
But if each person appointed one, and we all know, I know some people extremely committed to this city, some of whom just accidentally bought their residential property outside the city limits, didn't even know it. We all know that.
Yeah, why would we want to exclude that person?
Well, you can give your balance and fairness, perception, how important is the perception? How important is it that we include someone? Are we going to say that that person is so qualified, we cannot find a taxpay person or resident that lives in Hickory who could have that slot? Are we just going to?
I don't know, I mean, I'm not understanding you, or you're not understanding me, I think that person does pay taxes, they own that property and that business.
Well, we got off of that, we got off of that. We're saying, if you live in Hickory, and this is absolutely correct, Mr. Layle, we're not going to ask if you pay taxes, because if you live in Hickory, you're eligible.
Right, and if you own a business, we know that, too.
Well, one, one, one way to start looking at this is, it depends on how you're going to go about appointing them, it kind of starts getting into that next question, because ultimately, you all are talking about putting restrictions on yourselves. You know, if you all are going to make the appointments, then it's really up to you to say, well, I picked this person because I felt like they had a business interest in the city, although they don't live in the city, or, you know, for whatever reason. So, in some regards, you don't have to put any of those restrictions on yourselves, other than just the transparency and the fact that everybody knows who got appointed and where they live and what generally their business interests are.
We've got to address those individually as we come to them, is what you're saying.
Well, or we all got to.
Well, so, well, so let's talk, well, let's talk about how you, how you make the appointment. Maybe those, those, those rules, if you will, come into play if you're going to look at it in an entire slate, okay? So that's where either the city manager hands you a list and says, here's 27 people that meet these different criteria, and you, and you discuss them and you vote on them. Or your subcommittee does that, then probably those rules start coming more into play. But if you all each just want to say, hey, we each have four or five or six appointments or whatever that number is, then I don't know that those rules are as important at all, because everybody knows, well, Ms. Patton appointed these people, and she's accountable for them, for whatever reason she had to appoint them.
But collectively, we're accountable for creating a process that is viewed as fair and reasonable to the people who live in Hickory.
True.
We are accountable to them, and not necessarily anybody in an ETJ or anywhere else. Now, if there is somebody in an ETJ, who lives in the ETJ, who has some qualifications that clearly make them superior, a superior choice than anybody else, I'd say, let's bring them on.
Yeah, but that, that's, I mean, that's a judgment call, anybody could say that, we could, we could say that.
I'm just saying, we've got 40,000 to pick from, I mean, I'm getting kind of.
Currently, is there anybody that falls in that category that we know of on this?
I haven't looked at all 86.
We don't even know what wards they're in.
No, we, well, theoretically, I do, it's sitting here, but I haven't looked at all, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, good word, Mrs. Fox.
Yeah, well, so maybe, maybe you move from the discussion of the rules to the discussion of how do you want to move forward with appointing them? Because they interrelate, so maybe if you make the decision about how you want to appoint them, then that helps you discuss, you know, what kind of criteria, what kind of rules to lay out.
I'm leaning towards individual appointments now.
I am, too.
I'm just very much in favor of the individual appointments.
Rather than a slate or a subcommittee, that, we lose then our ability to have the responsibility of appointing people we think would do a good job.
Well, that fit the demographics of that, but we want this commission to look like the entire city, and I think it's each of our individual responsibilities to make sure that we accomplish that.
Well, the difficulties that I have with that, and it's not an extreme difficulty, because we use that with our existing commissions by and large, and it works, it works. And I, and I really do trust the, trust the process, and I trust my fellow council members on their appointments, and I'm sure you likewise with me. But I'll just, we would be making them in a vacuum, right? We'd be selecting six in a vacuum, you know, unless, until the, until the commission's up and convened, then you get a sense of who else is on there.
Well, there's no reason we couldn't have discussion among, okay, I picked these four individuals, and I just want to check with you to make sure you haven't picked the same four individuals, and, and that type of discussion.
So you're taking, you're going to take it out of the ward?
No, but if, leave it in the ward.
If, no, I, I think we, we represent the entire city. We represent the entire city, we ought to be able to pick persons from the list regardless of the ward that they are in, because we represent everyone in all the wards.
And two, I might know someone in another ward that I think would do a really good job and think they ought to be on it, and you might not know them. And so, I don't want to be limited.
I think it's very important that every ward, that no ward say, I don't have, you know, we have ward representation here. Every ward has one representative at this table.
And they'll have, they'll have more than one on this commission.
Let's say you've got one, let's say you've got two from Ward Three, and two from Ward One, and eight from Ward Five. How does that work?
Well, I think, I think it's incumbent upon us to balance that out amongst ourselves.
Well, the problem with that, I think, is that, number one, I'm not comfortable having a lot of discussion outside these chambers as it relates to appointments to this commission. I just think that, that, that our commitment, and I know you, you guys are all the same way, that we're going to have to. going to have to do this as we do it. The other problem we got is, seven years down the road, you know, I know, I've worked with you guys, I know what spirit you're coming from, what you want this commission to look like, you know, how you feel like it should work. And I mean, we are clearly all on the same team. But we're writing code here that's going to be here when we're not here. And so we've got to, I think we've got somewhat of a responsibility to sort of take ourselves out of it.
Well, and you say, like, you know, five years from now, you say, well, this was a Ward Six appointee. This person lives in Ward Two. But it's a Ward Six appointment, so Ward Six alderman gets to decide this, and they can go anywhere in the city they want to do it. But how do you know, I guess, do the appointments follow the seat, if you do it that way?
Yeah, I mean, that's...
You can pick from anybody in the city, but the appointment stays with that chair.
Right. Yes. That's the way I would...
Plus, these things, they do rotate. I mean, you have another appointment after one year, in two years. So it changes every year.
Maybe you won't be here next year, but somebody will hold that chair.
Right.
So we're saying, certain seats are held by a chair and not by a ward.
I don't think we ought to restrict it by ward.
I stand opposed to an appointment process that's not, at least at the very basic level, intended to be geographically diverse.
And equal. And as equal as you can.
I wait, equal among...
Well, if Brad knows someone in my ward, he thinks it'd be a very effective member. And I don't know, I think he would try to convince me, or I would interview that person, talk to them, and find out if I agree with him.
But if you've already got your four picks, and you want those four people, and he's got three, but he wants to pick his last one from your ward, I don't think we ought to restrict that process.
Right.
I don't know what happens if we end up with some ward having one pick.
I don't think we will.
I don't...
Two picks.
Kind of start a whole new game here, and...
Well, what you're saying is, by coin toss, we're going to make this equal. I'm sure of this.
Well, and what worries me is, not now. I think we'd be okay. It's seven years from now. Because we're all changed, and all of a sudden, you know, I don't...
Then that's up to...
And I think public opinion is highly important in this.
We could do, I mean...
Yeah. I'm in favor of picking from my ward.
You're saying restricted only to your ward?
Yes.
I disagree with that.
Then what would happen to the ETJ? That wouldn't be part of it. So then you either...
Well...
It's an either-or there. If your ward are...
You represent the entire city.
That's right.
Yeah. Not just your ward. And that's my contention for that.
Me, too.
Okay, so there's clearly no consensus on that. So we're going to have to bring back the options that you all can basically vote on and decide, you know, through that process.
Do you want to wait to vote, or do you want to just vote? I mean, what's our timeframe now? I don't want this to drag on forever, but I'm not pushing for a vote to...
Right. So what I anticipated is exactly what's happening. Great discussion, back and forth, give and take on these things. It's really up to you all. If you feel like you can be there in a couple of weeks, you call for your public hearing, which gives you input for people to come to the podium and have, you know, their opinions, give you their opinions on how this ought to look. At that point, you would have a draft that you could tweak, you could vote on, or you could say, you know what, we're still not where we need to be, and keep working.
Can I ask that you, can we ask that you include certain specific options for us to be thinking about?
Absolutely.
I would like to be thinking about an option. And everybody's going to write they have their option.
But we feel like if we're asking these folks to come and to represent their board and commission, that they ought to have a voice. You've got a big commission as it is, and we felt like they might feel a little bit disenfranchised if they're simply sitting in those meetings and maybe reporting back out to their board and commission, but not necessarily that engaged in having a vote. Again, that's something you all certainly can decide. This is simply staff's crack at it.
And drawing from these groups for ex officio, some of these would probably be considered for nomination as non-ex officio anyway.
Could be.
Yeah, I hear you.
But they would actually be appointed by their body. So the planning commission would say, would have their own discussion, say, we want this member to represent us and to fill that seat.
For that body that provides that person, will they, for the person that they may want or not, would it be just for a one-year term?
Yeah. We're going to come to that in a second, but I'll go ahead and address that. So it's contemplated that the board and commission members serve a one-year term and can serve two terms. So then you get opportunity for it to rotate through the board and commission members as well, and you just get more citizens involved.
And also, some of those may rotate off that board before the term would be up.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, there's going to be a whole host of reasons that people will rotate out before their term is up. Obviously, people move in and out of the community, different things like that, if they're absent and retire.
I mean, I don't want to, I know you want to get...
No, it's fine.
But let me ask a question, just from a practical perspective. And it's not until you, you know, you really start digging, thinking it through, that this kind of stuff comes up. So these guys are on a one-year term. It's a quarterly meeting cycle. They're going to have four meetings. I mean, I guess, I'm trying to understand, would their role in furthering the bond, would it be more about bringing information back to their respective city board or commission?
Yeah. I think it is. I think it flows both ways. That their board and commission could have opinions about a certain project, and they say, we want you to bring that back to the bond commission and express our concerns or our interest or whatever. There's nothing magical about that. We just simply felt like if they each have one term, well, they have two one-year terms, so theoretically, they could sit through eight meetings at the same person. But it just keeps more people involved. That's all. But certainly, that's all completely up to you all. There's nothing magical about this. We're just throwing some things out there to start from. We did feel it was important to codify within your ordinance... You know, for all these years, I've bragged to my wife that I don't need reading glasses, and it would be a city council meeting where I'm trying to read small, fine print that I've got to keep a bit away. This must be the night. So looking at your composition of appointments... Thanks. Thanks. Everybody's helping me out.
There's more coming to you than there is there.
Thank you. I got the big print.
Does everyone bring the magnifying glass next time?
Just don't tell Beth, that's all I have.
It's on video already, so. She has to tune in.
Okay, so we've covered, let's go to 2247, then. See, where you start talking about, okay, here are the, kind of the qualities that we're looking for on the commission. So you're saying, to the extent possible and practical, the following factors, that's the right term, not qualities, but the following factors shall be considered when appointing members. Residency. Obviously, you want folks that have been here a long time. You want folks who have been here relatively short periods of time, I would imagine. Their experience and interest. So, you know, economic development, recreation, real estate, fundraising, design, engineering, business ownership, community involvement. This isn't meant to be kind of an all-inclusive list, but I think it's meant to kind of be illustrative of, you know, we want people from diverse backgrounds and diverse interests. Then diversity in and of itself, and here, we're talking about gender, age, race, ethnicity, so that the commission is reflective of your community. And then kind of the catch-all of other relevant experience. So, you know, I think somebody once said, hey, if you had a planner from Seattle move here, and they just, you were like, wow, this person's going to have some great ideas. That might be another kind of person. So you're saying that you're going to use those in considering, and you're saying that you're going to do that for all appointments. And so what that means is not in just your initial appointment, but that as these vacancies come open, these criteria, again, they're codified, they're going to be used to keep your commission diverse, representative, and really broad. So then you get to, well, how are you going to come up with, if that's your criteria, how are you actually going to come up with the folks that get appointed? And I'll say here that we've had 150. Is that right, Sarah? Is it right at 150, or a little more than that?
It was a little more.
Yeah, we've had a little more than 150 people express general interest. Then we sent out a survey to all of those that had expressed interest, asking them to fill out the survey on Survey Monkey, which gives more information. After our meeting, I'll actually hand out to you, and I sure appreciate Ms. Fox, she was working until 15 minutes ago, to tabulate the 86 that we've had fill out the detailed survey. So of 150-ish, we've had 86 already fill out the more detailed survey. We'll also give you the electronic version, so you can go in and play with the spreadsheet and sort. But I got a sense from talking to somebody all today and yesterday, you wanted to start wrapping your heads around who's here. So we'll give that to you, and you have that to start working from. But so, just in conversation with you all over the last week or so, and this is, again, this is not comprehensive, but three kind of distinct approaches to coming up with how to make those appointments have come to the fore. One is that you ask myself and staff to basically take all this tabulated data, take the criteria that you're looking at, and provide you all the draft slate to start working from. And that's basically the model that we used with the Inspiring Spaces Committee. Another one would be that we simply provide you all of this information. You all appoint a subcommittee of this body and ask that subcommittee to review all of this information and whatever other input you want to. And then that subcommittee brings a slate to the full body of city council. And that's how you did the University City Commission. And then lastly, is that each city council member just has a number of appointments. And then you all just simply have that number, and you appoint whomever you'd like to. You still pull from all this information, and so you know, you know, the types of backgrounds, et cetera, that you're looking for. I would say, under that approach, a potential Achilles' heel is that if you just all happen to, you know, get the same people or the same types of people all from the same neighborhoods, or if it's, you know, only your ward or whatever, you don't have a safety net, other than just yourselves at this body, when the time comes to make those appointments of saying, whoa, wait a second, we're missing people in this age category, or we're missing, we need a few more people in this gender or race category. So that would be, you know, something you'd have to work through if you chose to do it that way.
And all of this is public record.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to have, well, I personally would resent, if I were going to, if I had applied, I'd personally resent having my candidacy discussed in public any more than it has to be. Unless, of course, it's all unanimous. But you see what I'm saying? The people who applied for this do not, may not understand that this could be subject to scrutiny.
I think it was on the survey.
It was on the survey.
It was included in the information.
Yes, it would.
But still, we need to limit that, I think, as much as we would like for it to be limited if it were us.
Yeah, we, I think that's a very good point. It's what I call self-inflicted wounds when you throw stuff out there that...
Like, the rule always was for me, treat it like you want your mother to be treated.
So then we kind of move into the terms. Members appointed by council are eligible to serve a term of three years, so that's kind of the general term. But obviously, to have staggered terms, so you don't have everybody rolling off at the end of three or six years, we've suggested that you have a third of the members are in one-year terms, a third are in two-year terms, and then a third are in three-year terms. All members eligible to serve two consecutive terms. So what that means is, if you get put into a one-year term slot, you can serve that year, and then if council chooses to reappoint you, you serve a three-year term. You've served a total of four years, you rotate off. If you're in a three-year slot, you serve a total of six years potentially, and then you rotate off. So then you've got, you've got the staggered piece working, and everybody doesn't come on and off at the same time. We got some of the technical issues about how you feel unexpired terms. Again, if people move away or they retire. And basically, what we're suggesting here is that serving the remainder of an unexpired term is a term. So if someone had been on a three-year term, and they left after a year and a half, and you came in and filled that year and a half, you filled that term, that counts as one term, then you're eligible for another three years, and you'd be four and a half years in that case. Trying to keep your city clerk from pulling all of her hair out when she brings these things to y'all. We talked already about the ex officios. We're just tying, on F, we're just simply tying back 2248F. We're simply tying it all back into the section of your existing ordinance, which, again, talks about not serving more than consecutive terms, et cetera. Trying to stay consistent with your existing code. Filling of vacancies, we've basically already touched on that, that you'll use the same type of approach and criteria when those vacancies come available. Obviously, no compensation. Officers and duties, a chair and a vice chair. As we've already discussed, you're, I don't know, I guess we were talking about ex officios, but we've contemplated that the chair and vice chair each serve in one-year period with eligibility to be reappointed by the commission to serve a second year as chair or vice chair. So you have chairman, vice chairman serving a total of two years.
I put a question mark above that. I'm not so sure that they shouldn't be staggered and not both of them rotate off at the same time.
Okay.
You know, I mean, to have both of your leaders of the group to leave at the same time, I think it might be better to have them to do some kind of stagger there.
Okay. That's a good point.
Good point.
Of course, the chairman presides and can appoint subcommittees, call special meetings, et cetera. Vice chairman presides when the chair is not there. Ex officio members are able to vote. That's really kind of the only piece of that question. Meetings, quorums, attendance, minutes, 2253. Again, quarterly, but then called, special called is needed. So if you think about the type of work they're going to be doing, as we get, let's say we get design proposals back in that we want the commission to review and discuss, and it's two months until they have another meeting, and that's not timely. Obviously, staff would say to the chairman, hey, we think you need to call a meeting to go through this so that we stay on track. I think those will be the kinds of things that drive some of the called meetings that they might have throughout the year, just to keep everything moving forward.
And I, you know, and I have a note here, you might include E, because you just mentioned it, the subcommittees, that, you know, such subcommittees as may be needed, you know, I guess in between the quarterly meetings, you know. And I wanted to clarify, I think, on the appointment of subcommittees, they would, I don't know if it's work language, but they would not necessarily need to be within the commission. They would, you know, if you're interested, if you're working on a particular area, and you want to appoint some, a subcommittee of some ad hoc stakeholders, that would be possible under the way this is written.
Well, I think that's something that you all should discuss somewhat. I think we kind of contemplated as staff that they would be commission members, recognizing that my view is, is that you'll have this commission that's kind of the overarching, looking at everything, but when you start looking at specific projects, so let's say that we're working on street improvement proposals on Springs Road, that we as staff would simply go out and engage the people along Springs Road and, you know, have a charrette out there and show them different ideas and get their feedback and everything, and maybe a subcommittee of the commission is involved in that. But I think you could run into some problems if that commission is tasked with doing that. But that's just our thinking as staff. And that's, I mean, if you think about the way planning works in cities, that's a real typical model. You know, staff will go out and will send invitations to everybody that's along that roadway, bring them in, show them all the different plans, get their feedback at different phases, et cetera. And you can have focus groups around the Riverwalk, around the CityWalk. I mean, obviously, you're going to have bikers, runners, lots of different groups of people that are going to want to, you know, have some level of involvement. I have not seen that necessarily as being subcommittees of your commission, more town hall-style, charrette-style engagement with the broader community. But again, that's totally up to you all to discuss and decide if you want to put parameters on that or change that.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Dula just made a good point, that none of your other boards or commissions have that inherent authority to say, well, we want to create a subcommittee of, outside of our membership. So that would be a...
I think it gets very unwieldy when you have this committee and then a subcommittee and what have you.
and what have you. Is it, do you think it's necessary that we even consider that?
I think the commission could, could want to have a subcommittee of their own body to dive in a little bit deeper and to work with staff on some, on some certain issues.
I think the key there is of their own body.
Right. I think your broader, outside of the commission, again, gets back into just the charrettes and, you know, just overall community engagement, the mind mixer tool, I mean, all those things we're going to try to use to, to keep the community engaged and get opinions.
And they're always, they can always invite anyone they want in to help them to explain or explore whatever it is that they're, they have questions about. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I think it's going to be very similar to how this body interacts with staff. I mean, I frankly, I think city staff and your, your bond administration person or team, company, however that ends up shaking out, will set the agenda, will have those conversations with the commission. It's hard, it's hard to say, you know, exactly how they'll respond to certain things and, you know, I think we'll just kind of feel that out as we go through it. But I do think it's important that we stress to them, and everybody understands that it is advisory. City council cannot abdicate your responsibility to ultimately approve contracts, select vendors, I mean, all those things. You're wanting their, you're wanting their input and their wisdom and their, their expertise on it, but ultimately this body's going to have to take those actions. And so in some regards, you got to make sure that your commission understands their mission and what their role is, and that they don't start thinking that that's their job.
We're not delegating our responsibility.
Okay, so we've covered voting, attendance. Oh, quorum, we just, you know, I guess maybe because of some planning commission experience, we felt like we need to have a fairly low threshold for a committee, for a quorum. I mean, I'm sorry. Because again, if you're meeting quarterly or you have called meetings, you really are going to bog down the workflow process if, you know, you don't have a quorum and you got to start over and you got to schedule three weeks out another meeting, et cetera. We just came up with 10 randomly. I mean, 10 out of 38, 36. So many numbers. You know, is a third, less than a third of your members, and nothing magical about that. You can make it 12, 15. We just felt like if it's a lower number, you can, you're not going to stop the process of moving forward because you can't have meetings because you don't have a quorum. I don't think it'll be an issue in the first couple of years. I think there'll be tons of excitement and enthusiasm, but you know, these are long-term projects, a lot of work involved. You know, you could see people starting to kind of willow away over time, maybe.
Are there any laws governing the quorum?
No, it's completely up to y'all to determine what a quorum is.
Guys making the rules.
Yep, it's your, your body, your, your law. Some conversation with council members about, you know, is three consecutive regular meetings miss too many? If they're only meeting four, you know, if you, if you have four in a meeting, they missed three quarters of the meetings, maybe that ought to be two, you missed two meetings.
That would actually be a year.
There's provision, there's provision for...
Unexcused needs to be in there.
There's provision for formal waiver.
Yeah, it says without formal consent of the commission, so that, you know, in fact, they're governing themselves.
That's not in every place, but it is in one book.
And of course, minutes.
And two, they can have as many meetings as they want. They got to have at least four, but if they have 40, then that's up to them.
Well, I wouldn't say it's totally up to them. I, I think that's going to be, you know, staff and the chair talking about what you need to do. I think you got to be real sensitive to not wearing everybody out.
Yeah, but I mean, it's kind of...
And not micromanaging everything that's going on.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine four as being the exception. My guess is they'll probably end up having six, eight meetings a year. Again, it's hard to know.
If you take missed three meetings, then that would be a year between the two meetings that they would have been, if they came after before the meeting, that would be the next year.
Well, it says, yeah, that's true. It could be, although it's consecutive meetings.
Would that be three consecutive meetings counting the called ones and the...
Yeah, all meetings.
Time certain, too.
This is missing.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to get into that here.
So, so looking at the mission, purpose, objective, again, we kind of restating here that the objective is broad citizen engagement. We included the language about the projects, including but not limited to, carrying over from the preamble there. I think I've already covered kind of the mission of the, of your commission. We already mentioned open meetings and public records, laws apply. Okay, so the various questions, discussion points, as we get to the last couple of slides. Is everybody okay with the language of other projects consistent with the referendum being added? Since you don't box yourselves completely in there. The members residing within the city, I guess that's, you know, that's something you all need to discuss.
I think there were some people who live in ETJ that are very pro-city. They own property here in the city limits, so they do pay taxes. My initial was it should be city members, citizens only, but then we've had some that have worked very, very hard to pass the bond and truly see the vision of what Hickory's going to be. And I hate for us not to have the ability to include the ETJ.
How about the wording, if they pay taxes in the city of Hickory?
You know what I'm thinking?
That includes property owners and others.
What about businesses versus personal? A lot of people view, a lot of people view business taxes as being very different than personal taxes.
Well, I'm not talking about taxes at Walmart. I'm talking about taxes on building on property.
Property taxes.
Property taxes.
But there are people who would say, that person, I'm just throwing devil's advocate now, that person, no, their business pays taxes, but they don't. Well, I pay my own taxes.
Yeah, I think people that, that own property in Hickory that don't necessarily live in Hickory should not be excluded.
I wouldn't want to see an excess of this.
Yeah, I would, I would be of the incline, because we're, once again, our objective is broad citizen engagement, that we not exclude it to just property owners even in ETJ. Right now, it's not excluded, I mean, and obviously we would not restrict membership to property owners within the city. And so it doesn't make sense that we would restrict them within the ETJ. I mean, I guess other than they've got a financial, you know, interest in it, but I, I still think that's slippery, real slippery.
What, not to have?
So I'd say go ETJ and leave it at that.
I agree.
Not say...
Not property owner or anything like that.
As long as you own property within the city limits.
Because that wouldn't necessarily be fair to someone that didn't own property but lives in ETJ that is so pro-bond and see, and the positive and sees the vision of what this whole thing was.
Yeah.
I think ETJ ought to be...
Yeah.
Part of this.
I think it'll be a little easier to administrate from a, from a court side, too. I mean, now, who's going to check property records and all that other stuff as people transact?
Any discussion on that one? Is kind of a consensus that you'd go with the ETJ?
We can include the ETJ in our scope of who we nominate.
Right.
Or who we appoint.
Are ETJs still in, I mean, from what I've read about the state, they're trying to do away with some ETJs?
They are right now.
So maybe there will be no ETJ.
That's possible. That's possible. You'd probably, you know, that would be...
Why are they... I don't know for the reasons...
Because it subjects, it subjects people to zoning that didn't have a chance to vote on it.
That's, yeah.
Taxes.
Do you want to limit it to residency, or do you want to say who resides or owns a business in?
I like to say resides.
I like to include those who own a business. If you own a substantial, well, I mean, if you've got an investment in Hickory, I think you ought to be able to be a part of this commission if you, if you're interested in.
I would rather say resides, that you actually have an investment of living in the ETJ.
But some folks, you know, have more investment in their business than what other folks may be in their residence. I mean, I don't, why would we exclude those folks?
How are you going to prove that? Who, who wants that to be discussed out in public? Who wants me to tell the people at McDonald's, hey, this guy pays a lot of taxes?
Well, that's not the issue. Not the issue about how much taxes he pays. The issue is he owns a business and he has an investment in Hickory just the same as anyone else.
I, I, I'm going to hear, I just want you to know, I'm going to hear, I don't think so-and-so pays any taxes and he's on, he or she's on that commission. They're voting, although we know, we know the limitations of the commission's responsibilities. There will be people out there saying they're voting on my taxes and they don't pay them themselves. I just think we're getting, okay, we have one or two, I don't, I don't know that's a problem. Are, are we going to say four or five or six? Is that too many? Are we just say anybody who has an interest and is smart?
Smart.
No, or has qualifications.
It fits the demographics.
But I think we would all keep in mind what our goal is, and that's to have this reflection of our community. And no, we're not all going to go out and appoint everybody from the ETJ and no one from the city, I think.
But if each person appointed one, and we all know, I know some people extremely committed to this city, some of whom just accidentally bought their residential property outside the city limits, didn't even know it. We all know that.
Yeah, why would we want to exclude that person?
Well, you can give your balance and fairness, perception. How important is the perception? How important is it that we include somebody? Are we going to say that that person is so qualified, we cannot find a taxpay person or a resident who lives in Hickory who could have that slot? Are we just going to...
I don't know. I mean, I'm not understanding you or you're not understanding me. I think that person does pay taxes, they own that property and that business.
Well, we got off of that.
And they do.
We got off of that. We're saying if you live in Hickory, and this is absolutely correct, Mr. Layle, we're not going to ask if you pay taxes, because if you live in Hickory, you're eligible.
Right. And if you own a business, you know that, too.
Well, one, one, one way to start looking at this is it depends on how you're going to go about appointing them. It kind of starts getting into that next question, because ultimately, you all are talking about putting restrictions on yourselves. You know, if you all are going to make the appointments, then it's really up to you to say, well, I picked this person because I felt like they had a business interest in the city, although they don't live in the city, or, you know, for whatever reason. So in some regards, you don't have to put any of those restrictions on yourselves, other than just the transparency and the fact that everybody knows who got appointed and where they live and what generally their business interests are.
We're going to address those individually as we come to them, is what you're saying.
We are, or we all got to...
Well, so, well, so let's talk, well, let's talk about how you, how you make the appointment. Maybe those, those, those rules, if you will, come into play if you're going to look at it in an entire slate, okay? So that's where either the city manager hands you a list and says, here's 27 people that meet these different criteria, and you, and you discuss them and you vote on them. Or your subcommittee does that. Then probably those rules start coming more into play. But if you all each just want to say, hey, we each have four or five or six appointments or whatever that number is, then I don't know that those rules are, are as important at all, because everybody knows, well, Ms. Patton appointed these people and she's accountable for them, for whatever reason she had to appoint them.
But collectively, we're accountable for creating a process that is viewed as fair and reasonable to the people who live in Hickory.
True.
We are accountable to them and not necessarily anybody in an ETJ or anywhere else. Now, if there is somebody in an ETJ, who lives in the, in the ETJ, who has some qualifications that clearly make them superior, a superior choice than anybody else, I'd say let's bring them on.
Yeah, but that, that's, I mean, that's a judgment call. Anybody could say that. We could, we could say that.
I'm just saying, we've got 40,000 to pick from. I mean, I'm getting kind of...
Currently, is there anybody that falls in that category that we know of on this?
I don't, I haven't looked at all 86.
We don't even know what wards they're in.
No, we, well, theoretically I do. It's sitting here, but I haven't looked at all, so I can't tell you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Good word, Mr. Starks.
Yeah. Oh, well, so maybe, maybe you move from the discussion of the rules to the discussion of how do you want to move forward with appointing them? Because they, they interrelate. So maybe if you make the decision about how you want to appoint them, then that helps you discuss, you know, what kind of criteria, what kind of rules to draw out.
I'm leaning towards individual appointments now.
I am, too.
I'm just very much in favor of the individual appointments.
Rather than a slate or a subcommittee. We lose then our ability to have the responsibility of appointing people we think would do a good job.
Well, that fit the demographics of that, but we want this commission to look like the entire city. And I think it's each of our individual responsibility to make sure that we accomplish that.
Well, the difficulty that I have with that, and, and it's not an extreme difficulty, because we use that with our existing commissions by and large, and it works. It works. And I, and I really do trust the, trust the process, and I trust my fellow council members on their appointments, and I'm sure you likewise with me. But I'll just, we would be making them in a vacuum, right? We'd be selecting six in a vacuum, you know, unless, until the, until the commission's up and convened, then you get a sense of who else is on there.
Well, there's no reason we couldn't have discussion among, okay, I, I've picked these four individuals, and I just want to check with you to make sure you haven't picked the same four individuals and, and that type of discussion.
So you're taking, you're going to take it out of the ward?
No, but if, you're going to leave it in the ward?
If, no, I, I think we, we represent the entire city.
You don't want to take it out of the ward?
We represent the entire city. We ought to be able to pick persons from the list regardless of the ward that they are in, because we represent everyone in all the wards.
And two, I might know someone in another ward that I think would do a really good job and think they ought to be on it, and you might not know them. And so I don't want to be limited.
I think it's very important that every ward, that no ward say, I don't have, you know, we have ward representation here. Every ward has one representative at this table.
And they'll have, they'll have more than one on this commission.
Let's say you've got one, let's say you've got two from Ward Three, and two from Ward One, and eight from Ward Five. How does that look?
Well, I think, I think it's incumbent upon us to balance that out amongst ourselves.
Well, the problem with that, I think, is that, number one, I'm not comfortable having a lot of discussion outside these chambers as it relates to appointments to this commission. I just think that, that our commitment, and I know you, you guys are all the same way, that we're going to have to do this as we do it. The other problem we got is seven years down the road, you know, I know, I've worked with you guys, I know, I know what spirit you're coming from, what you want this commission to look like, you know, how, how you feel like it should work. And I mean, we are clearly all on the same team, but we're writing code here that's going to be here when we're not here. And so we've got to, I think we've got somewhat of a responsibility to, to sort of take ourselves out of it.
Well, and, and you say, like, you know, five years from now, you say, well, this was a Ward Six appointee. This person lives in Ward Two, but it's a Ward Six appointment, so Ward Six alderman gets to decide this, and they can go anywhere in the city they want to do it. But how do you know, I guess, do you, do, does, do the appointments follow the seat if you do it that way?
Yeah, I mean, that's...
You can pick from anybody in the city, but the appointment stays with that chair?
Yeah, right, yes.
That's the way I would...
Plus, these things, they do rotate. I mean, you have another appointment after one year, in two years.
It's no different than if you do the rest of it.
So it changes every year.
Maybe you won't be here next year.
Right.
But somebody will hold that chair.
Right.
So we're saying certain seats are held by a chair and not by a ward.
I don't, I don't think we ought to restrict it by ward.
I, I stand opposed to an appointment process that's not, at least at the very basic level, intended to be geographically diverse among the city.
And equal, and as equal as you can make it.
I mean, it can't...
Well, if Brad knows someone in my ward, he thinks it'd be a very effective memory, and I don't know, I think he would have tried to convince me, or I would interview that person, talk to them and find out if I agree with him.
But if you've already got your four picks, and you're, and you want those four people, and he's got three, but he wants to pick his last one from your ward, I don't think we ought to restrict that process.
I don't know what happens if we end up with some ward having one pick.
I don't think we will.
I don't...
Two picks.
Yeah, we kind of start a whole new game here and...
Well, what you're saying is by coin toss, we're going to make this equal. We're going to, I'm, I'm sure of this.
Well, and it, and it's, what worries me is not now. We, I think we'd be okay. It's, it's seven years from now, because we, we're, we're all changed, and all of a sudden, you know, I don't...
Then that's, that's up to them.
And I think public opinion is highly important in this.
We could, I mean...
Yeah. I, I, I'm in favor of picking from my ward.
I, I'm in favor of picking from my ward.
You're saying restricted only to your ward?
Yes.
I disagree with that.
Well.
Then what would happen to the ETJ? That wouldn't be part of it. So, then you either, it's an either/or there.
You represent the entire city.
That's right.
Not just your ward, and that's my contention for that.
Me, too.
Okay, so there's clearly no consensus on that. So, we're going to have to bring back the options that you all can basically vote on and decide, you know, through that process.
Do you want to wait to vote, or do you want to just vote? I mean, what's our timeframe now? I don't want this to drag on forever, but I'm not pushing for a vote.
Right. So, what I had anticipated is exactly what's happening. Great discussion, back and forth, give and take on these things. It's really up to you all, if you feel like you can be there in a couple of weeks, you call for your public hearing, which gives you input for people to come to the podium and have, you know, their opinions, give you their opinions on how this ought to look. At that point, you would have a draft that you could tweak, you could vote on, or you could say, you know what, we're still not where we need to be, and keep working.
Can I ask that you, can we ask that you include certain specific options for us to be thinking about?
Absolutely.
I would like to be thinking about an option. And everybody's got a right to have their option brought in. That we, that we have, each council member appoints four, that's 24, plus we have nine, right? So, that's, that gets us 33, which would never matter.
Seven, or do you have seven?
We have nine ex officio, right?
Yeah.
So, we have six times four.
There's seven of us.
Well, let me finish my option.
Oh, okay. You're talking about just the council?
Because I honestly think this is going, if we just cannot, if we get through this without causing public opinion issues, it's going to work out great. So, what I was going to say is, if you guys make your appointments, we say that this committee will be no less than 24, plus nine, no less than 27.
Less nine.
And if we have clear issues about the diversity and fairness and balance, then and only then, I have up to three appointments to try to get it fair. And that's not coming from any particular ward, it's just, it's just out there. It gives us a chance. And what that accomplishes is this, a couple of things. One, if everything's real silent, nobody's hearing anything about these appointments, and all of a sudden, one day, bang, they're all out there, and everybody says, you know, they did this, they did this behind closed doors or something. This is not a good start for this. We need to, you know, let everybody pick their four. Set whatever rules you want. I mean, I personally think, I personally think the simplest thing is to say you've got to live in Hickory, and my opinion has evolved on that. And then I could have up to three, only if there's an obvious need to balance. Otherwise, I don't, I don't want anybody.
I think we have a responsibility to appoint, and that would include you. I mean, we've told the citizens we're going to be appointing this committee, and I think we have an obligation to each take part in that and appoint citizens to this commission.
Well, if each of us appoint four, including me, and then we get to the end, and we got this big hole in there, and said, there's no way to balance it.
Well, then we have to discuss.
Why would we allow that to happen?
Well, I guess, I guess because we're going to be buzz, 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 talking about this all the time.
Well, I mean, I think that's probably part of it.
I'd kind of like to minimize that. But hey, can you include that option?
Yes, please.
And it can be voted down or voted up?
Okay, so for my indulgence, this has been, this is good discussion. Let's talk about this subcommittee option. Let's just run through all the options here and have sort of the give and take and good and bad, so everybody's sort of, we get a sense of where.
Could we take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Okay, well, I think before the recess, Mr. Lael had mentioned talking through those three options that are at least out there now, and discuss them a little bit, so it's really whatever y'all want to do, whatever y'all want to proceed.
Well, I'd like to.
You want to talk about subcommittee options?
Well, yeah, I want to talk about both options, and sort of at least air what my sense of it is, you know, because, you know, there's no right or wrong answer here. You know.
The only thing is perception, public opinion and perception.
Well, and, yeah, but I do think that we also, and this is where I'm, you know, it starts to, maybe there's some ideas diverging. I think the commission also has some function that we've got to be responsible that they fulfill, and to be functional, they've got to be made up a certain way, in my opinion, to meet the bond objectives. So, the subcommittee thing still would provide council the direct appointment authority, and would, it'd be a lot of work on the three members of the subcommittee to do that, but I would be, I'd be willing to serve if we made that route. So.
Well, as you know, that was my choice.
I know. Look, this is an evolving thing. I mean, this is good discussion.
Well, and just sitting here thinking off the top of my head, I mean, maybe you also consider a hybrid, where each council member brings forward their four, and then the subcommittee reviews those to do exactly what the mayor pointed to, to make sure that you do have the representation and the diversity that you're looking for, and that's their state of.
And the ward representation.
Well, I mean, a representation in all categories. So, maybe that's a, so that you're kind of hitting it both, having your own appointments, but then you've got kind of this clearinghouse of your subcommittee to review it, to make sure that you've got, you know, the right kind of representation you're looking for.
Well, if we do it by wards, back to the point four from Ward, there's only one on this list, Ward Three. So, I'm going to have to do it and convince three other people that want to serve.
Well, I would be willing to go with you to try to do that, because I think down the road, that will be thrown up ass. Okay, even though we can say, you didn't sign on, there will be people who say, they only had one from my ward, and they had six from Five. And they're spending my money. Again, I'm dealing with perception and public opinion, and in the sense that perception is politics, I'm dealing with that. But I'd be willing to go help you try to get some more.
And two, he said only 80-some out of the 150-some, maybe the other rest of our orders. This is not a complete list.
Just those that are done yet. But it also, it also raises the question of, do you have to have filled out the survey and submitted the information to be considered?
I think you should.
I think you have to. You got to have a standard there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we don't have that.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that we can't go to somebody and say, please fill it out and get it in, so we can consider it.
Now, you do have a deadline out there of 16th to have done the survey, to be considered in this first round. But again, this is all, you know, y'all can extend that, you can change that, you can panel however you want to.
These are the ones that have filled out the actual survey. Can you also provide to us who has expressed an interest but not taken it to the next step, so that if, as Danny says, he's only got one out of this, but there might have been six or seven others that just haven't taken, and it just needs a push from Danny to say, go fill it out, so I can have more than just those represented?
Yeah, yeah.
If we could have that as a separate list.
Okay, so to continue and piggybacking on next discussion with this hybrid thought, which is, I think, pretty good. What if you did, each seat gets three appointments. They get, it's theirs to appoint, and then a subcommittee then selects the balance of appointments?
As an option, but I prefer.
Can you say you take three appointments and three nominations? I don't know. The subcommittee's, of course, the subcommittee, you're going to have a lot of information. Yeah, I think it is important we have qualified, committed, interested people. But it's just about as important that it's perceived as fair by the public. And I think you all could, I think the subcommittee can do that.
Now, the subcommittee would obviously need to get a call.
You have three, so that would be 18. And then you're going to pick six more, right?
Well, I don't know how to handle you.
Let me explain. I don't, I don't worry. 80-some, first of all, the fact that we have 80 people who care enough to have filled out a second, tells me there's a lot of interest in this. If there's a lot of interest in this, there are going to be a lot of disappointed people, because we're only going to select 24 or 27. I don't want to have everybody out there lobbying their ward person and me. I just don't want that. And that's why I said, then I would be amenable to say, and maybe I'll take three or four, or whatever y'all think I should, only if it's needed to balance out the committee in some way. Otherwise, don't call me and say, I really wanted to be on there, and so-and-so didn't put me on.
It's just hard to codify if it's needed to balance out. I mean, who's going to make that decision, under what terms, what?
It had to be clear, it had to be clear.
I mean, yeah, we could hold a discussion on what's clear for now till midnight, I'm sure. Clear as mud.
We'll know clear when we see clear, maybe. I'm just saying, you know, my guess would be, we go through this process, and I don't appoint anybody, because it's just not clear that we have a balance issue to deal with. I just, I don't want to be, I don't want to have to deal with 80 people who want to belong on this committee, and it's going to swell to 120 or 130.
That's certainly an option.
Well, so one solution is, in the next week or so, as we put the agenda together for your next crack at this, you know, I'm putting together options, in effect. The mayor's already presented one option. As you think about other options, you can simply email them, and we'll put them all on there, and then you can work through each of those options and vote them each up and down, and start narrowing, you know, narrowing the field, so to speak.
It'll probably delay getting the ordinance passed, you know, past the public.
It might, yeah. You might have to go another two weeks.
Because we're going to have to, once you, it's interrelated, right? So, once you do that.
Then you have the ripple effect, and then we got to, we got to adjust the other parts of the ordinance to reflect whatever process you choose to appoint.
So, do you have your, do you have an understanding on where we are headed on a budget?
Absolutely not. But I'm going to put together a process that helps you get there.
I certainly am.
So, just a couple of other quick things to run through that maybe aren't as tricky. Are you okay with 10 being a quorum, or do you want a different number than 10 as your quorum?
10, 10's fine.
Okay. Three consecutive missed meetings, is that too many? Do you want that to be less?
Two consecutive unexcused. Unexcused in advance, by action of the.
It's kind of sad that we'd only have 10 people show up for a meeting.
That would be sad.
36, that would be terrible.
I don't think that's going to happen.
You have it just starting.
No, I think there's interest here.
Yeah, wait, I think so. I don't think many people.
Well, I've heard from a lot of people who have.
Is that you? Okay, that concludes the presentation.
No, we haven't discussed the slate. We had talked about the makeup of others on the committee, the ex officio.
Oh, the ex officios, thank you.
Because I do think, I don't know why this chamber is, because I think the salt block should have a stake in it. If we're going to open it up to something other than our appointments and our present committees or commissions, then we need to look at opening it up to DDA, other business groups that have a stake in this.
Lenora.
Lenora, even though they've got a commission member, but there are certainly other groups that certainly should be representative and have a stake in this also. So, if we open it to one, we've got to open it to all. So, I think we, there again, it becomes institutionalized, and we should bring it back to the citizen base rather than.
Well, for instance, you say the salt block, if you have four, five, six, seven groups in the salt block.
Then, so where do you, where do you draw the line? So, do you include the chamber? Let's.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce, I want to, this is just my opinion. It's been publicized that a group of our citizens acting in good faith with no malice reached an agreement with the chamber, that they could have representation on this. I think we need to, I think we need to accept that. I don't think we want to fight this battle day one of moving forward.
Well, so do we need to pick and choose?
That'll be something we'll need to vote on, I guess.
Yeah.
So, then do we include Salt Block?
No.
Do we include?
I don't think, all we have here is, we got the Chamber of Commerce because of that commitment that was made.
And that commitment, though.
And everything else here is a city commission or committee or council.
But that commitment should not have been made.
It was made. And we can, in my opinion, in my opinion, we're going to cause more trouble and issues if we move forward saying that we're contesting that.
But then I would like it opened up then for others.
We have not turned this over to the Chamber of Commerce. They were, their commitment was made to them that they'd have a representative. It was publicized. Whether it should have been publicized or not is a different issue. But I, you and I both know, Ms. Patton, how often we get stuck with stuff we didn't make, okay?
Then I do think, at least for the discussion of other options, to what other stakeholders should in fact be included, that have just as big an interest in, and were supportive of the bond, went out of their way to support it, and should be included.
That sounds accurate a little to me.
Same thing, so.
So, it's either all or none.
Well, I would suggest you do the same thing with other options of ways to appoint, if there's other groups outside or within your own boards and commissions, let me know, I'll add them to the list, and then y'all can go through each one of them, vote them up and down, and decide who you want to include with ex officio and not. If that's, is that what you're saying, Ms. Patton?
Is this going to be, should we have a workshop?
Probably.
Yeah.
We have, anyway.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like we're doing.
We need to do this a little earlier in the day and be able to, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important.
It's critical. I mean, there are going to be, there are going to be things that have to be settled down the road in various ways, various things are going to come up. But the closer we can come with something that we're all happy with, and the public accepts is fair, it'll be better.
Well, it's quite obvious that there are a lot of people that are very, very good citizens in the city, and I'm very proud of them. And the disappointing part is, some of them won't be able to participate. Yeah, but you know what, and no, I agree with you, that disappointing.
Maybe not the first time, maybe not the first time, maybe down the road.
But we got to, I mean, I was thinking when I made the comment about subcommittees, I mean, you know, to some extent, the public is the subcommittee of this commission. You know, they are, all meetings are open, discussion, all that, so I don't feel like any commission we have will be, you know, will exclude input from the public. You get on.
We done, Mr. Berry, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if you say so.